...and independents in their later years and now contribute their time and experience to the quality of life for our community. And whereas the contributions and experiences of seniors serve to enrich the human experience for all of us. Now therefore, we, the Township Council of the Township of Hillside, would like to recognize our senior citizens and wish all of you a very happy birthday. We think Gilbert, Franky, Barbara King, Ray Johnson, Arminio, Novas, George Fox Jr., Lucy Shaq. And to all senior citizens in the Township of Hillside who have celebrated their birthdays on January, we hereby proclaim March twenty-fifth, twenty-two, as a happy birthday to senior citizens of Hillside Day.
Uh, okay, everybody. That is Council, Council, uh, Rio. Uh, someone who got the birthdays for celebrating this year, senior citizens, we have Geraldine Forwardy Eve, Dolly Manley, Anna Ruby Alton, uh, Gloria, Dennis Coates, Alberta Capway, Sandra Valen, Doris Lutet, Tana Kumar Tal Kalati, Rose Bernada, Christine King, Jemett Lemon Tala, uh, Miffy Graham, Celeste, Lorraine Gardner, Gloria McAlvey, and France, uh, to all senior citizens in the Township of Hillside who have celebrated their birthday on February, hereby proclaim March twenty, uh, to the birthday of senior citizens of Hillside Day.
For the non-March, now therefore, we, the Council of the Township of Hillside, would like to recognize our senior citizens and wish all of you a very happy birthday. Demarc March, Anne Janowski, Mary Holmes, Sandra Jackson, Barbara Moe Bell, Agnes Bennett, Victor, Alsa Morano, Patricia Kenyon, Loriece Harris Romney, Denise Polite, Cameron Sim, Patricia Cardin, Marcia Tillman, Sonia Armillos, Elizabeth Green, Phillies, Anna Marrow, Earl Bugg, Cockenhorfer, Rob Manley, and me, Chris. And to all senior citizens in the Township of Hillside, we have celebrated their birthday on March, we hereby proclaim March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, happy senior citizens of Hillside Day.
Okay, council. Okay, members of the bill, March twenty-fifth, we got this one with, uh, any motion?
Motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Council President, any, uh, reports from your finance committee in reference to the payment of bills?
Uh, the finance committee met on Monday, went through the bills with CFO Jones and BA Smith. There was a bill, uh, hoped that we were gonna take off, was it the Remington, is it removed?
It's been paid down.
Right, I see it, the, okay, so, so we're gonna remove the Remington Berg engineers, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty, that'll be coming off, so we will, um, I guess we'll decide how we wanna vote on that.
Stay for the record, the reason why it's coming off, please.
I don't think it's. The bill was put on, um, by error, and she had questions about it, and she was raised a question about some of that.
So, for the public, you didn't hear, it was put on, um, by error, and Mr. Smith, the BA, had questions about it, so she asked that bill be removed.
That's it for me, council.
Any other questions from the council members in reference to the bills?
Yes, Council President.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Thank you. Um, this is the, uh, Councilwoman, are you comfortable with all of the Remington bills that have been moved, if they're being handled or not, or are they being handled?
Yeah, the, uh, the, uh, removing, the, uh, the Remington Berg, we're, we're for services that are rendered in the prior, we're, we're gonna leave those on the end table.
And so what about the prior bills for Remington that were removed at the last few meetings? Did you all address those open items?
The ones that were removed from previous meetings that were, services are rendered, I think had to be paid, I think there's no, I think what we decided, and BA Smith directed me, was that any new bills from Remington Berg that are over these fifteen thousand dollar threshold, um, would have to come before us, but other than that, these, these bills were, were, I guess the prior bills were allowed to be paid.
So did they provide you with the reports that you requested?
Yeah, I, I, I.
What they, did you share with them?
It was made available on, on August eighth, we can't say that any bills.
Yeah, any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll call it out, sir.
I'm going to ask the, the bills, I'm asking, here, um.
Yes, sir, madam.
Uh, I'm going to ask the bills, I'm going to go ahead. Yes, we've got to know, uh, so, we've got to be, engineers should provide at least the, you didn't have a report, and this is your department has not attend council meetings as identified specifically, clearly, in the water act, and our township code.
Council, Vice President Ariel, uh, Council, Minister, sorry.
Yes, sir, madam.
Council, Vice President Ariel.
Yes, sir, madam. Yes, sir, madam.
I asked for the load, and then I'm like.
Okay. Okay, the votes are going up, and I see that, and I see. Good second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading introduction, ordinance number zero twenty-five dash eight. Sublime must provide for the local units, a local share capital improvement project for the joint meeting expenses in each county, five in the Township of Hillside, in the county of New York, state of Jersey, the local unit, appropriating one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Therefore, we're not, uh, one hundred and sixty thousand, uh, five, and those, the five, uh, 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 uh.
Aye.
You get the second.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions, please, uh?
CFO Jones, please. Uh, yes, Council President, as you know, the joint meeting, you know, changing the block for infrastructure improvements, uh, we like to down the block share, uh, we're going to have block market, which is funded, uh, really, for sure.
Is the price going up? A little bit?
Uh, I think it's been on a couple days ago, two days.
Okay.
This is our share for this particular bill.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Quick question, CFO Jones, do, does the joint meeting send a schedule of what they think the improvements are gonna be going forward? Do they present, do they present that?
Yeah, we're, uh, two, okay.
Can we, can we get a report tomorrow?
I think we have, uh, Lisa, uh, just, uh, Lisa.
Lisa. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilman Piercy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Joyner.
Yes.
Council Vice President Ariel.
Yes.
And Council President F.
Yes.
Motion passes for first reading for ordinance zero twenty-five zero eight.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one, county year two thousand twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap thing. This was tabled, can I get a motion to untable this?
Motion. Second.
Any questions from the council to untable?
Uh, quick question, Council President, if we untable it now, and it doesn't pass, what happens?
Uh, that affects how the people like this.
I mean, I understand this has to be presented.
Before it's passed.
It could be at the same meeting, from what I, like, the resolution for.
Second meeting.
Sure, it's not the first, yeah.
The first meeting will be passed in one.
So I, am I to assume that you have two versions of the budget at this point? Because assuming that the budget is done, should be done.
We have, uh, a few of the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the.
So for the sake of the audience, could you specify some of the details included in this?
So this is ordinance that allows us to go, we even have to send about last year's appropriation. Uh, without this ordinance, we can only go two and a half percent, so there, uh, we need to go one, two and a half percent, we can't do it unless the pass is over.
And two and a half percent or three and a half percent of what specifically?
Uh, for the, uh, uh, fifty million dollars.
So this would allow you to go beyond that to what would be, what would three and a half percent be?
Uh, the ordinance, it's one million four hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, seven cents.
So therefore raising the budget to approximately fifty-two million?
Uh, it's within the appropriation side, so if there's any, yes, we, we, we.
And appropriations for the sake of the audience on the expenditure side?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Excuse me, any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, motion to...
I just need a vote for, uh, on table.
I'm sorry, on table, so it's a vote to untable, my apologies.
Uh, Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilman Piercy?
No.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
No.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ariel?
Yes.
And Council President F?
No.
Motion fails to untable ordinance twenty, oh, twenty-five oh one.
Thank you. Public hearing and adoption, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero three, privately owned salt storage ordinance. Can I get a motion to open up this ordinance for public hearing?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, the floor is open to the public in reference to twenty-five dash zero three, privately owned salt storage ordinance. The podium is open, if you wanna talk about this at this time.
Council President, should we have to explain what it is?
Glenn, you wanna explain his ordinance, the salt storage ordinance? Or Ms. Smith?
This is an ordinance that was prepared by the engineer on behalf of the Department of Public Order. It is required that by not the state mandate, so residents may not, uh, in compliance with state mandates.
Counsel, you have any questions before the public take the podium?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
What specifically has changed, what does this ordinance bring us in compliance with?
This is the ordinance in regards to the storage of salt, privately owned salt storage. This is the ordinance, you don't have to, uh, 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 uh.
And so what, because keeping in mind, the audience doesn't have the ordinance, so we're, we're talking about it, and it's a, what, a second reading of, for adoption and stuff, but we're really not giving enough detail for the audience to know what it's about. So, in asking, can it be explained? Can we explain the details of what the ordinance will do as opposed to it'll bring us in compliance with the law?
The purpose of this ordinance is to prevent stored salt and other solid de-icing materials from being exposed to stormwater. This ordinance establishes requirements for the storage of salt and other solid de-icing materials on property is not owned or operated by the municipality, privately owned, including residences in the Township of Hillside, to protect the environment, public health, safety, and welfare, and its product penalties for failure to comply. Further, this ordinance provides definitions, de-icing material storage requirements, exemptions, enforcement, violations of penalties, and several abilities.
Thank you, my other question is, when we say privately owned, I'm not, I don't understand why we would put salt that we own in a privately owned storage facility.
This is a homeowner who has salt and other de-icing materials, how they have to contain it, not the township, storing hours on a private property, but this is how it is to store only private properties.
Okay, so that's a key factor in the explanation. So this ordinance relates to homeowners storing salt on their own property.
That's, that's, uh, the material on property is not owned or operated by privately owned, so yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's.
Okay, I'm just asking for clarity, 'cause that, that sounds like the township is gonna buy salt and put it in somebody else's property. That, is that what y'all heard, or what you understood? That, that's why I asked the questions I asked, not because I'm dense.
The public, if you have any questions, you're free to come to the podium at this time.
Good afternoon, Christian Eschmera, fifteen thirty-eight Morris Place, um, definitely to piggyback off that, I did think that, so if it's for homeowners, pretty much we can't have salt in front of the house, you know, like, or whatever the ordinance would say, properly stored. Yeah, makes sense, a hundred percent, I agree. All right, cool, um, so I, so it's only for twenty-five oh three, I just had a minor question on the twenty-five, uh, oh one, uh, no, not twenty-five one, twenty-five oh eight that we went. All right, so that's open, that's gonna be for public comments for the way?
Not, not tonight.
Not tonight?
Not tonight.
All right, well then, you guys are doing great, thanks for having me. Anybody here that has any questions on Board of Education, I'm here, so I'm not, Christian Eschmera, and I'll see you guys, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the public from twenty-five oh three? Seeing none, motion to close?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What, what?
Oh.
It's closed, please.
Closed.
Lisa?
Not a motion to reopen.
Wait, let me, let me reopen it first. Can I get a motion to reopen twenty-five oh three?
I move.
I get a second?
Second.
For public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to speak to the audience and the council to remind them that tomorrow, right, is the fourth, I cannot.
Twenty-five oh three?
I've tracked everything that I was getting ready to say, I'm sorry.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move for passing.
Motion to adopt twenty-five oh three?
Second.
Second. Counsel, I'm sorry, bro, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilman Piercy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ariel?
Yes.
And Council President F?
Yes.
Motion passes for oh twenty-five oh three.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh four, municipal stormwater control ordinance. Motion open is up to public hearing, please.
I move.
I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions from the public in reference to twenty-five oh four?
I need a all in favor.
I'm sorry, roll call.
No, I need a all in favor for a public.
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this time, twenty-five oh four, the public have any, before we have the public come up, uh, 'cause somebody's explaining so they know what they're coming up talking about, please.
The purpose of this ordinance is to establish minimum stormwater management requirements and controls for major development, as defined below in section two. Section two provides definitions. Section three provides for design and performance standards for stormwater management measures. Section four, stormwater management requirements for major development. Section five is a compilation of stormwater runoff and groundwater recharge. Section six is for the sources for technical rights. Section seven is solid and floatable materials control standards. Section eight, safety standards for stormwater management basins. Section nine, requirements for a site developed stormwater plan. Section ten, maintenance and repair. Section eleven, penalties. Section twelve, severability, and section thirteen, effective date. This is another state mandate, which is in regards to the stormwater control, so any applicant that goes before either the planning board or zoning board will have to comply with this ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, the podium is open for the public in reference to twenty-five dash zero four, municipal stormwater control ordinance. Seeing none, motion to close?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt twenty-five oh four?
I move.
Second.
Any questions from the council?
Is there a cause?
There's a penalty, you date off the clock, you have to, uh, uh.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilman Piercy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ariel?
Yes.
And Council President F?
Yes.
Motion passes for our ordinance oh twenty-five oh four.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five, an ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals.
I move.
Second.
This is the, that is a motion to move to open it for public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get an explanation, uh, Madam Smith, if you will, or, uh, attorney, whoever feels comfortable doing it, in reference to this ordinance, before the public comes up?
Um, so, Council President, as we had discussed, and this is a long-awaited, um, ordinance that we had put up, um, first reading with respect to...
Can you get to the mic?
No, the mic's not working, sorry.
Should we face it?
So, um, this was a long-awaited ordinance.
Well, you should get, you should actually.
Regarding short-term rentals.
You should actually get up and do it, he's a blank.
Again, um, so this ordinance deals with, uh, as we had discussed, um, many times before this ordinance was presented, um, to the governing body, uh, it seeks to prohibit the use of short-term rentals, um, um, within dwelling units throughout the township. Um, short-term rentals have been an issue, um, for a very long time, and this seeks to prohibit, um, their establishment or their rental use, as well as, um, uh, promulgate specific penalties for any violators.
Public hearing is now open.
At this time, the floor is open for public hearing in reference to twenty-five dash zero five.
Annie Davis, fifteen forty-four Morris Place, here in Hillside, um, this is a big concern of mine, and I really wanna know exactly now, what are we gonna do going forward? What are we gonna do about the already existing places that have already been made, so-called Airbnbs or rooming houses? And like I said, I live on a block now that has four. Um, uh, just last Sunday, I watched nineteen people come out of one house through an ice cream truck. You know, so what are we gonna do about the existing ones already?
I can answer, yes, certainly.
Okay.
I'll wait for you, and then I'll answer, I think, we should get into the practice then, let, let him make his comment, and then you're answering.
Because the only thing this is doing is depreciating my property. You know, I come home now with next door, it's nice to see kids, believe me, my block now is almost all retired, uh, people, so I'm, I would love to see families, I would love to see kids. I also want, you know, wanted to be where, where you have people and it's not their own, they don't care about it, so if they don't care about that, they definitely don't care about ours. I came home the other day and there was rocks that I had around flower beds pushed away, and that was from the kids, and that's okay, because I'm gonna give them a second chance, you know, and if it happens again, I'm gonna go and speak to the parents, because they don't speak English, so I'll get my daughter-in-law to come and interpret for me, but, um, that's all I want, I want to live out the last of whatever I have, constantly. I don't wanna worry about now, every time I come in, I got to look around before I open my garage door, or before I come out of my garage, or that now I got to, something I never done and I should've been doing, to keep my alarm on my house. You know, this, we shouldn't have to live like this, because there's other people that wanna come here and make money, 'cause they're not living in it, they're, they're renting, they're making money, and I wanna know how much of that money is the town getting? Is it all going in their pockets? How much of it is the town getting in taxes? We know, I know that they haven't gotten anything far as of getting, um, building, um, permits, 'cause they come and they do it whenever they want to, you know, Sundays, all day long, they come in, so those are some of my questions.
Thank you.
So, I, I think we heard, um, not even I think, we did hear all of the concerns, 'cause this was a, a discussion that we had well before this ordinance was placed in front of, um, the governing body, as well as in front of the residents, um, because we heard your concerns, and in, and in establishing this ordinance, these four recitals that are actually listed in this ordinance, or at least, um, was this, at least spearheaded this ordinance, are very important, and I think they address and go to directly your concerns and your comments. Whereas the number of short-term rentals, generally defined as stays of thirty days or less, of dwelling units, individual rooms within dwelling units, and building structures and uses accessory to dwelling units, has grown rapidly in recent years, and whereas the Township of Hillside seeks to prohibit the use of the short-term rental use of dwelling units throughout the township, because short-term rentals can create disproportionate impacts related to their size, excessive occupancy, and lack of proper facilities, and, and this is directly to your point, whereas the presence of short-term rentals of residential dwelling units in established residential neighborhoods can create negative compatibility impacts and nuisance violations, among which include, but are not limited to, excessive noise, on-street parking, accumulation of trash, and diminished public safety. So we took a lot, we took everything into account when we put this ordinance together and we put it in front of the governing body for vote, because these are important concerns to the residents, and they're important concerns for the individuals you voted for, right, to make sure that everything, all of your needs are considered with respect to what they're doing out there, and they're doing to your neighbors and they're doing to your community. Now, with respect to what's, what's going to be done going forward, not only to those who maybe, may have intended to have these activities, to do the, these activities, but also to prevent or to punish those who did those activities, again, we're going to be inspecting, more importantly, we need the public's help to at least identify those violators, bring them, bring them to our attention, and we'll act accordingly. These fines are stiff in here, they're not thirty-dollar fines, these fines are stiff, and they're, and they're, and they're, and they're, um, established for that particular purpose, to make sure that they hear what we're saying and what we're trying to do. Okay, so the public needs to help us, identify them, and we as well, that's what we have co-inspectors for, right, that's what we have employees in the township for, that specifically look for those things. Okay? Any other comments for the public? I refuse to be the mic fixer tonight, just to let everybody know.
Fay Fryerson, seventy-two Hillside Avenue, and all I wanted to do is just remind you in reference to this...
Fay Fryerson, seventy-two Hillside Avenue, and all I wanted to do is just remind you in reference to this, because I have one directly across the street from me. Um, and I've informed you guys, and I've spoken to Hope about it, so she's fully aware of it as well, and she's working on it. However, what we forgot to mention, what I didn't hear you say, which is probably in there, is the impact that it has on your sewer system as well. Because people coming into the area, they don't care what they're putting down there, and, you know, as my dad used to work for joint meeting, he would always say, "Be careful what you put in the sewer," because we just saw a bill of a million dollars for that. So, if you could maybe include that in there as well, because it does have a great impact on our sewer system, and we're the ones paying the sewer bills. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the public? Twenty-five dash zero five.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nancy Davis, fourteen eighty-four A, Liberty Avenue, Hillside, New Jersey, zero seven two zero five. Just wanted to say thank you so much for, uh, whatever happened to the skunks, the skunk problem. The skunks and the families have moved out now, and thank the Lord for that.
Hallelujah.
Because they were hanging around and they were multiplying, but now we don't see any skunks, and I hope wherever they went, they stay. And so we appreciate your efforts in helping us with that problem. Also, we thank you for the little, um, I call it a little bucket, when the people are walking their dogs, and you have the little buckets there full of chicken, little tissues out and so forth, the little bag, and that's helping to keep our streets clean. We appreciate that, because there's a lot of dogs walking on Liberty Avenue. I'm walking myself at times, and we do run into all the little dogs, little puppies, and whatever, whatever, we greet them with a smile. I met Mr. Joe and Mr. Brown and all of those little puppies, and so, but again, now we don't have to worry about stepping in what they leave behind. So we are grateful again for that. We see the police around us.
Before, before, before you continue?
I'm sorry.
This is only for the ordinance for short-term rentals.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you can, you can say all these great things, we appreciate that, uh, when we have public comments. But do you have anything in reference to the public hearing on this particular?
No, I'm sorry, I got here a few minutes late, but I got it off my chest.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We'll open it back up to the public, and you can continue with-
Oh, no, I'm done.
All right. Anything in reference to twenty-five dash zero five? Seeing none, motion to close public comments?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt twenty-five dash zero five.
I move.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Roll call.
Councilwoman Bonanos, excuse Councilman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison, excuse Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel?
Yes.
Council President Epps?
Yes.
Motion passes for ordinance oh twenty-five oh five.
And let me just thank, uh, Tony Matillis, the administration, the council members, uh, and the public for bringing this to us, and, uh, took a little while, but we got something done. So again, I thank the administration, everybody involved to help make this happen, and thank you. Resolutions are twenty-five dash zero nine, authorizing refund of premiums for tax sale certificates. Can I get a motion?
I move.
I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from the council? Go ahead, you want to briefly explain this, please?
Uh, yes, Council President, uh, these were, uh, companies that were in the tax area, the tax areas that started smaller, they were being, they were refunding, they were on the first.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Bonan, uh, Councilwoman Bonanos, excuse Councilman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison, excuse Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel?
Yes.
And Council President Epps?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five oh ninety.
All right, before I, um, continue, I want to make a motion for us to go into executive session, uh, for litigation matters. Um, probably in reference to, in, in particular, R twenty-five dash zero ninety-one. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I will be back shortly. We won't be long, I promise.
With the water. Because what we had was, I think, Harvard and the next street, they both did a main, so instead of both paving half, they swapped the road. One reason I know this much is because they came out of the loop. But the gas company's paving the loop. They're paving the loop, and then they could create a little side. They paved the loop, and then keep the free, they don't say it. I wonder how far down. I wonder if they can from top, I just got.
It's not a one, it's not a one. I'm on Mars. Oh, you own that lot, I like that lot, it's a big house. I'm saying, at the bottom, it's a building right there. Right, right. As you're trying to, you're, 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 you're. Well, I like that. Okay, so you're coming to the park deal for the last, for your, okay, I'm happy to show you between that level. No, they stay on the fire, maybe the body can.
You don't want to hurt your teeth?
Yeah.
You don't want to hurt your teeth?
No, 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 I'm sure. The old, old right down there, you, you, you know, you're.
Thanks, I'm very behind that.
Somebody's fixing it. I'm proud to visit, wait, for the churches.
Oh, yeah.
And for the, if you're a house, right here. And I would, I'm probably. I tried to do that, I was nice with the, I was with the street, I had a good little block, I was, I was. And they still have the movie, just a dollar for the, okay, never mind. Uh, we can go, but I can't wait till, okay, I'm gonna be in.
Okay, I'll, I'll. Love you too.
It's actually hard for him. Yeah. There is one after the other.
That's what I could add to you, yes. Yeah, now, um.
My check.
With the county, we just.
I'm not sure if it's the first or third, or the second. I, I don't know. No, no, Arthur.
Was it dying, and it was the parking grounds?
Where we have anything to do with it. You speak to Jack or Alex?
I can't remember the, the person, they, no, we were talking about different situations.
So, it's not the street sweeping, but she said when she contacted the county, they came out by garbage curb.
Is it on the curb?
Yes.
That's not us.
And she said they came out and cleaned it up. I was gonna tell her, I was gonna call a policeman out, but she said.
We don't do, we don't, what we do is maintain the road, but the reason why the roads are not being swept? They are being swept, but the problem is, nobody's enforcing the parks. So, we can't get rid of cars, those cars need to be towed, when they park, um, so, what happens is, my sweepers. Our sweepers go right around those cars. Because, see, we take care of the road, but we don't enforce the traffic.
So, we, we enforce the traffic, that's not doing the job.
Huh? Or Elizabeth, what's, what part, uh?
Um, and I was.
There's cars parked there?
Yeah.
I mean, I'll find out, I mean.
Well, we call, we call.
Did you call the right number?
Oh, no, 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 the police department, not Narrokan, the direct number, they'll come out, and they move, I'm not, I'm just talking in general, the cars are not.
No, did you call, he wanted to correct, uh, the sweepers, it's seventy-nine, nine oh eight.
Hey, Michelle. It's fine.
Nine oh eight, seven eight nine.
Hey, hope, just not the whole package they committed.
Three six six zero. And they'll tell you what week is so.
Single package?
And then if they miss it, because it could be the reason why it happens, where there's cars there, you can call back and go, they'll pay you. I'm only there for a couple of hours, until the morning, a couple of hours. But if you're not the sidewalk, you will. That's the home, that's the property on the street.
Get a motion to close, uh, public session, I mean, sorry, executive session?
Motion.
All in favor? Motion to go back into open forum, please.
I move.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. R twenty-five dash zero ninety-one, authorizing the filing of tax appeals counterclaims, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
No.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
No.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
No.
Motion fails for R twenty-five zero ninety-one.
R twenty-five dash zero ninety-two. Awarding a contract for the PY fifty CDVG grant, improvements to Harvard Avenue to Fisher Contract Incorporated, ten Short Hills Lane, Scotch Plains. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Um, is this for paving?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Did we include speed humps in this?
No.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Any street widening?
No, this is just resurfacing and curbs. Maybe a.
And how did we, how and why did we choose Harvard?
This was selected, um, by our EPW director and engineering based on policies and streets that are related.
Because I know they complain about speeding a lot, so I imagine resurfacing is just going to exacerbate the speeding. And I know they've requested speed humps countless times. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-two.
R twenty-five oh ninety-three, can I get a motion?
I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council?
We just got a brief explanation on this.
Uh, yes, this is from our bond ordinance from twenty twenty-three, which probably will turn up here for the bond project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, Council President.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Thank you. Um, did we get more than one bid?
So speed counterclaims.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-three.
R twenty-five oh ninety-four, can I get a motion?
I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council? Can we get a brief explanation on this, um, CFO Jones, please?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, really the funding that we are accepting, uh, to redo the, uh, courts.
The courts where?
Do you know, they're sending, they're having to talk to Hillside, they're gonna have to talk to you.
Central Avenue is.
So we're talking about basketball court?
Basketball courts, right?
Yeah.
At Central Ave, and you said where?
For duty center.
And a portion of this is a loan?
Yes.
What's the payback period?
Uh, we would determine that the people have to be covered, we have to try to be able to cover, where Harvard was a loan, but we never would allow the threshold to, uh, access. We have to draw the bid, if, if, uh, you accept it, then we're gonna get the terms, we'll be able to.
Okay, so we get the grant amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars? And access to a loan of seventy-six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so when we accept it, is it with the understanding to Green Acres that we are accepting the loan? Or just that we are accepting access to the loan?
Accepting access, so let's say we go out to bid, we comes in at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, then we don't need it.
No, I got the bid portion, I got all that, I said from the perspective of the grant, the person giving us the money, from Green Acres. When we say, yes, we accept this, is there understanding that we are accepting the loan? Or that we are accepting access to the loan? Thank you.
Can we put that in the resolution? Where it says, this two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and access to a loan of seventy-six thousand? So we're not.
Yes.
So they'll go in two spots.
Should you like it to say Councilman, emergency appropriation in amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen, and access to a loan of seventy-six?
Right, in both, where, in, in the where section, and then in bullet point one.
Are we on the emergency, or are we on the acceptance?
We're on the ninety-four.
Ninety-four, ninety-four. But I guess it would apply to all of them.
Right, but sequentially, we have to accept before we put it in the budget.
Sure, that's fine, you want to put that, throw it on the added number.
Thanks.
Do we? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Council President.
No. Any other questions, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Um, I was just gonna say, do we need to restate anything, or?
Just restate it as, the word, just restate it as the amendment that you wanted to read.
Okay. So that's me, because I moved it?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we accept the grant award from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection? For the Green Acres Grant Program? In the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars? And access to a loan of seventy-six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, roll call, and it's as amended. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes, as amended.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
Yes, as amended.
Motion passes, R twenty-five zero ninety-four, as amended.
R twenty-five oh ninety-five, I get a motion?
I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council?
Same, same comment.
Same, same, um, as amended? Okay.
Yeah, I move that this resolution be accepted for insertion into the budget? The grant amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars? And access to a loan in the amount of seventy-six thousand one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars? From Green Acres.
I'll second it. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, as amended, when we vote?
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes, as amended.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
Yes, as amended.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-five, as amended.
Uh, broke, I just, I know it was just on this agenda, it's got R twenty-four, twenty-five oh ninety-four again, as number seven? Is that a typo? I'm just gonna read it, and you, uh, Ms. Neves, this is justice number. It's authorizing acceptance of a grant award from the CARES Act Grant under CDVG CV Round Four for the Township of Hillside Food Program Assistance? In the amount of ten thousand dollars.
I move.
I get, any questions from council? All right, we're gonna renumber this, but, but that's the, uh, number seven, that's what it reads. There's no questions, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes, as amended.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Just yes. I apologize.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel? And Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-six.
All right, uh, R twenty-five oh, okay, it's the same issue here, so I'm just gonna read it. Authorizing emergency budget appropriation for the grant award under CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus? For the Township of Hillside Food Program Assistance in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
I move.
Take it. Any questions from council? The numbers are wrong, so we, um, just reading them, and they have to be renumbered.
No, it's just, it's.
Ninety-four, ninety-five's for the right. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, on the. Yeah, ninety-seven. On the resolutions, no, it's just on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah, the resolutions are good.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Reel? Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-seven.
All right, so this will be R twenty-five dash zero ninety-eight? No, the next one? Would you want to make that?
No, because you have an acceptance.
No, what is appro?
No, there's, there's one.
What was the appropriation, and what is the acceptance?
Yeah. No, ninety-seven, ninety, the one that we just have is ninety-seven, that was an emergency budget for appropriate.
The next one's ninety-eight.
Now we are ninety-eight, which is the acceptance for the water fountain.
The resolutions are correct, it's just the.
Yeah, it's just the agenda that's, that's, yeah, but the whole is, is correct, that's. It's just the numbers on the side.
That's why I'm reading them out, and it's totally safe, I know that. Authorizing emergency budget appropriation for grant award under CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus for Township of Hillside Installation Eight? Touchless Water Foundation in the amount of ten thousand dollars, can I get a motion?
I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council? Can we get a brief explanation on this, please, um, Ms. Smith or CFO Jones, either one? Any questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Thank you. Is there a list of eligible expenses that we can receive a copy of? So how were you able to determine that this was an eligible expense?
Any other questions from council?
Uh, quick question, so this is to install eight touchless water fountains, that's the one we're doing? For ten thousand? Do we have to spend this money now on this, or could we use it for something else that may be more beneficial?
How did we determine that that was what we wanted to ask for? You have a copy of the guideline? Can you guys send us a copy of the guideline? Mr. Forrest, do you want to see those before we vote?
Is that correct, did we max out all the other items that we could have done, like antivenom, or other folks related things, or was this, yeah, we got everything else?
Any other questions from council?
Nope.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Vice President Reel? Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for R twenty-five zero ninety-eight.
R twenty-five oh fifty-five, authorizing transfer of appropriations reserves in the local budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. This was tabled, can I get a motion to untable this?
Uh-uh. Wait a minute. You mentioned zero ninety-nine. Yeah. The one right before fifty-five. I move that we do the emergency budget appropriation for the grant, for the CARES Act.
I don't have it in my mind, ma'am.
Is that what we're talking about?
We just said zero nine, that was the east touchless.
We accepted it, we accepted it, and now we.
What about? That was zero ninety-nine.
You just accept it.
The agenda is zero ninety-seven, the resolution is zero ninety-nine.
Hello, hello?
Hello?
Uh, we are currently on resolution R twenty-five, uh, zero ninety-nine? And that's the resolution authorizing emergency budget appropriation for grant award under the CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus for the Township of Hillside? Installation eight touchless water fountains in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Which I just moved.
And I'll second that.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Banano is excused, Councilwoman Fierstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Joyner?
Yes.
Vice President Reel?
Yes.
Council President Ab?
Yes.
Motion passes for, R twenty-five zero ninety-nine.
R one oh fifty-five now?
Yes.
R twenty-five oh fifty-five, authorizing transfer appropriation reserves in the local budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion to untable this?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Any questions from the council? I represent those amendments by CFO Jones.
I can, can explain what we're doing. But the reason you lowered it now, can you explain what changed?
Well, the reason I lowered it, it's like the solid weight, uh, the only thing that's not handy though for the actual disposal, what we work with data? It's just the typical beefs for, uh, the revenue in December twenty twenty-four, which is about eight thousand, so that's why we're trying to support one week. Uh, for engineers, uh, for part of the waste, uh, that we're covering, that's, uh, that's a few things. Uh, there was a class that went through, maybe some of the new costs, or nine eighty, so that's why I have to.
So with departments, let's just say went over the budget, that you need to transfer, you know what, you had those departments, and... Transfer to?
But you know what, that hundred thousand per street and road, is that just, is that payroll related, if that...
No, it's not payroll related, it's a bill for the, uh, cabin, for rent pay, it's also a bill for, uh, general access for home access, and it's also, uh, change for the, uh, professional that operates also, the residential asset, for the road to the I D.
So initially you were asking for what number, and now I know we're at three twenty. Four eighty, so you found, so it went from four eighty to three twenty, so had we approved this a few weeks back, you'd have gotten four eighty from us to transfer.
Transfer from one party to the other?
Right.
But again, what would have happened is, that part of the half the fund, we would have rolled in silver, that's in twenty twenty-six.
Any other questions from council? All right, I have a motion to accept...
Untable?
Motion to untable, roll call for the motion to untable this.
Councilwoman Bananos excused, Councilman Fierstein.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Rio?
Yes.
And Council President As?
Yes, to untable.
Motion passes to untable R 25055.
Motion to accept R 25-055. Can I get a motion? Get a second?
Second.
Any questions from council?
Is this the kind of thing that we get from these reports that come from the department heads, that came before us, talk about what money they needed?
Yes, so would you appeal for that, uh, we need the department?
Well, you don't, being that we don't see department heads at our meetings, so I don't, we avoid this.
No, meaning, let's say, if the, if the department heads are becoming in January, February, we would've known that they would've said to us, say, we need X amount of dollars, for sure.
Uh, they would've known that they spent, if they were receiving, I would've said that they would've had some money.
I feel like it's an important part of the process.
I agree. Any other questions or comments from the council? Roll call.
Councilwoman Bananos excused, Councilman Fierstein.
Stay.
Councilwoman Garrison is excused, Councilwoman Hyatt?
No.
Councilman Joyner?
Yes.
Council Vice President Rio?
Yes.
And Council President As?
No.
Motion fails for R 25055.
R 25-074. Authorizing Township of Hillside to... It's being pulled, okay. R 25-075.
I'm sorry, stay, remain stable.
Remains table. Okay, seventy-four and seventy-five are to remain table. At this time, get a motion, open up the floor for public comments, public remarks?
I move to open public remarks.
Get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, the floor is open to public comments, public remarks.
Good evening, Arthur Kovitz, 3/27, Trinity Place. Good evening. Couple of questions. I understand now, what I heard from the CFO, that the budget is ready to be produced, because he said he had two of them, one if you had to cap, one if you didn't. So since you don't have to cap in, he should know what his, I'm assuming he knows what the number is. If he does, can we have an idea, because it's understanding, is the budget going to be going up? Because I believe the school board, from what I understand, is going to have to go up, because they lost $2 million in state aid, that has to be made up. So theirs are going to go up, and ours is going to go up, before taxpayers are going to get killed. So when will the budget be introduced, and do we have any idea when the, what the number is, at least a roundabout number? That's my first question. My second question is, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, everybody complains that department heads are not here, but I never heard one answer, question answered to our attorney, what right do we have to make sure the department show up? It's in your code. So I've been waiting for that question for somebody, to ask the attorney, because I know he's not going to answer it. But at least, he won't answer it for me, we know that. Maybe he'll answer it from somebody here. What right do you have? What, what, what's your alternatives if they don't show up? I'll wait for those two answers.
Attorney Matilas, you want to answer any of those questions?
I don't need the mic, I can hear you from here.
Oh, by the way, that mic is on, when you tapped it.
Hello?
Oh, I, I can, we can, we can hear the difference.
Council President? Hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Um, I don't remember the first question, I don't think the first question was directed to me, the second question, Council President, um, we've discussed, and whatever counsel that I've given to you is going to remain attorney-client privilege, so I'm not answering that in public.
You figured that.
The first question was the budget, right?
Yeah, when's it going to come, and if the budget's done already, because he said he had two budgets, there has to be a number close, we're not asking for the exact number, because you guys are assuming going to have to cut to save, save the poor taxpayers. But what is the administration's number, where are they at? Is it 1%, 8%, 6%? I, I mean, it's, I'm not asking for the exact amount, but he said he had both of them.
CFO Jones? Okay. Well, we'll know in about a week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? I mean, comments from the public? Saying none, motion to close public comments.
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor remarks. Councilman Fierstein?
Uh, just quickly, I'm glad, first and foremost, that we passed this short-term rental resolution finally done, I know that was a while, and a bunch of people in Ward 4 had voiced their concerns, I've been out to those properties to see them, this, I think, was a good way to see your voices heard and the council responding, um, so I do appreciate that. I think there's a lot of things here that we need to be transparent about, and it's, it's difficult, right, there's a lot of things going on, and being able to communicate with you is going to be a key thing, so I'm just going to plug that tomorrow night for Ward 4, at 7:30, there's a Ward 4 meeting, and we can kind of go over some of these things a little more in depth, where we have time to go through any questions you may have, any concerns you have, that you can voice here, or for some reason the public that's not here wants to do that, it's available for you tomorrow night at 7:30. Thank you, have a good night.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Um, it's good to see more people out tonight, thank you all for coming, um, always happy to see residents come out and voice your concerns. Um, I would just say, you know, we do frequently get caution about what the council can and cannot do. But to the point that Mr. Kovitz made, we have asked on many occasions what our rights are as council members, and how to proceed when things are not being done according to the law. So whether we're all aware or not, there are several things that take place, some unle, not legal, some unlawful, some just plain improper. And despite our concern, despite what the law says, it just doesn't change. We get documents at the last minute, we have a specific case that happened this evening, we had to come back out and vote, and oftentimes, we do not get complete information. And when we do get complete information, it's not always timely. So a lot of times, people are like, well, why didn't this happen? What took so long for that to happen? Deadlines are created, deadlines are not complied with, information is not provided. We heard early in the meeting, the questions regarding the engineer bills, and I asked my council colleague, did they satisfy the requests that were made regarding the engineering bills? So the engineers are making an upwards of $4 million a year, easily. We've not seen them at a, you're saying, no? You're shaking your head, no, but we don't get a report, they're making several million dollars. You say that's fair? No, so the engineers don't make millions of dollars in Hillside? Okay. Nonetheless, we don't get reports from the engineers, but they're a department head. They don't come before us, we ask for information, it's not provided, we're told we should send it an email, a caucus meeting is the place where we're supposed to be able to discuss the items related to the decisions we need to make about the township, that's the purpose of the meeting. The regular meeting is when we are supposed to vote. But before we get to the meeting, we should receive all the documents necessary to make an informed decision. And the fact that we continuously, for the whole eight years, to get things at the very last minute, is just not acceptable. So what can we do? We, we can choose to exercise our power and decide, okay, if X doesn't happen, then Y won't happen, but it would take enough people on the governing body to agree with doing that. Otherwise, it'll just continue like it's been, excuses and things not getting done. Thank you, have a good night.
Councilman Joyner? Council VP Rio?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I am very happy about the resolution for short-term rentals, I know that was a, a big issue with our community, so I'm glad that we're able to do that, and we'll work the administration to make sure that any properties you bring forward, or any, um, you know, recommendations you have as far as, you know, your block and what's going on, uh, and that they're, and they're addressed, um, so we'll make sure that, uh, we work with the administration to make sure that property communication is flowing, uh, and communication comes back to you, because that's also super important, right, so as they're going through that process, make sure there's open communication as far as making sure that they're following up, doing the proper procedures, so, uh, I am very happy to hear that. Uh, what I'm not happy about, um, is the resolution that was not passed today as far as the reverse tax appeal, so, um, how, how that affects Hillside, uh, is by hiring a law firm that goes in, that's not paid, by the way, so they only get paid by the cases they win, um, so what happens is, they pick out, based on metrics and based on analytics, and they think had 29 properties, uh, that they deemed were paying taxes that were super low compared to their respective values, now, some of these are based off of current sales, and those current sales are sale-to-sale exchange, where a reevaluation does not need to occur. So what happens is, at that point, that business continues to pay, even with new owners, and mind you, these owners are big, big, big corporations and big businesses, not the mom-and-pop shops, but big owners that, um, then have to go, I'm sorry, um, but then are benefiting from a lower tax rate, right, so what happens is, when, what was proposed today, was they were going to go, take them into court, into litigation, and have them, if we're successful, pay on a scale, to make sure that they're getting, paying a tax rate that's closer to their property evaluation, right? So when that has not happened, at the end of the day, when the administration tries the budget, that burden falls back on the community. Okay? So, uh, I, I understand all my, my councilmates' concerns as far as, um, you know, targeting some businesses, not, well, I do understand that, um, but if we do not start somewhere, and we do not get these big corporations to pay their fair share, our community pays for it. And that's where my rub lies, um, so I am, I'm saddened to hear that we cannot make sure that these big companies are paying their fair share, but, uh, we will move on, but thank you.
So, uh, again, let me, um, thank everybody for coming out this evening. We had a fantastic, fantastic Women's Month, where we honored a lot of our women in the community, well deserved. There's a lot of positive things going on in Hillside, I am happy about the ordinance that was passed prohibiting the short-term rentals, it was definitely a community issue, the community came out, and we, we, and it took a while, but it got done. We're not always going to agree up here as a council, as the way things get done, some council members are privileged to get information prior to, we all should be getting at the same time, have the same knowledge of what goes on within the township at the same time, that doesn't happen. And when we have, uh, issues such as, uh, the tax appeal issue, a lot of, some of the council members concerned, so we're fully transparent, is about what, who is going to be affected, who works at these establishments, and there's other issues that council members have, so we don't just come up here and vote no. The problem is that we don't get the information in a timely fashion, in many, in many things, to make informed decisions. We have to be mindful about what I, who, what residents and citizens we're going to affect when we make our decisions. Some council members might already know who these businesses are, me personally, I don't know not one business that might have been affected if we had have passed this tonight, um, and I have an issue with that. I need to have some knowledge as to what I'm voting on and what citizen is going to affect. Um, I don't have that knowledge, except my council members did not have that knowledge. So we make our decisions, I make my decisions based on the constituents that I serve, and unless I'm well informed as to what I'm moving, I'm not going to move it. So it's incumbent upon the administration to give us the information in a timely fashion. And unfortunately, for whatever reason, all of us do not get this information in a timely fashion. So when your tax, uh, bills or whatever might be affected tonight based on this, keep in mind that we make our decisions based on information that we get, and don't fault the council, again, fault where the, where the, the blame belongs where it belongs at, give us the information we need to make informed decisions, and we'll do so appropriately. With that being said...
Council President?
Uh, there's no rebuttals?
No, I'm not rebutting.
Okay, what?
You can rebuttal, I'm not rebuttal. Uh, I would like to bring from the floor Resolution R 2587, uh, according to Brooke L. V. S. as Deputy Clerk.
That, that, that resolution wasn't fact able, so it should have actually appeared on the agenda, so it's...
Yeah, it wasn't on it, but, yeah, I have an issue bringing it up now. You walking it on up?
I am walking, I am walking it on, yeah.
Can I get a second on that? Any questions from the council? Saying none, roll call.
Questions or comments?
I'm sorry, question or comments, I apologize.
I, I really need us to do better. I, I just do. We, we didn't get to talk to her, she's good with this, I, I'd need us to do better. That's it for...
Okay.
Is it, is it the reason we're walking it on and not part of the agenda? That it should have been on?
I don't know why it wasn't on, but...
I, I agree.
You want to go into executive session, huh?
So do they need to retract their motion?
I retract my, uh...
Motion to, uh, what? Tract your second?
Retract my second.
All right, any motion to go into, um, executive session for personnel matters?
Motion, second.
All in favor?